Okay, the time is now five p.m. and I call this administrative meeting of the city council of Ozark order. At this time, please make sure that your cell phones are silenced. And if you haven't already done so, you have a chance to sign in as a back. And I will also take this opportunity, and I will remind you later, if you do have to address the council for anything, please come to one of the mics on this side. So this evening, we're going to open with a public hearing for the ordinance permitting and regulation of low-speed vehicles. So I call this public hearing open. If we have anyone in attendance that is for or against the ordinance permitting and regulation of low-speed vehicles, AKA golf carts, would you come up to the mics and say your piece at this time? With that, I call this public hearing to a close. All right. Next up on our agenda this evening is a proclamation by the mayor for Military Child Month. Mayor?
Colonel Miller. May I start, Mayor? John. We just do the proclamation declaring April of 2025 is Military Child Month. Do we have any of the kids here?
Here we are.
I was telling somebody today, I have to tell this story. I've always admired military kids because I raised two spoiled rotten kids that I used to tell everybody they lived in a different house for every year that they went to school, which is pretty true. But the interesting part about that was they always had the same kids, the same church, same school system, unlike these kids. And so I always thought this was a really big deal that we honor them. Y'all squeeze in if y'all want to get up here and picture.
Y'all squeeze in together tight. Got to act like best friends.
Thank you. And I would just like to welcome our Carroll High School students as student group members as a former military child myself. Just note that my personal story is my dad settled here when it was time for me to go into the second grade. He went off on multiple different stations, but realized that we have a good place in Ozark. And he actually just wished for his family to stay here, get educated here. And he lived here, or he still lives here in his retirement. And we chose to raise our child here as well. So just realize you are in a good place in the world. All right, next, we have another proclamation by the mayor for Autism Awareness Month.
Okay, we're declaring April 2025 is Autism Awareness Month. I'm not going to read this whole proclamation. There is one thing in here I wanted to point out because y'all were probably like me, you had no idea. One in 36 children is diagnosed with autism spectrum disorder. I thought that was an extremely high number. And one of the reasons that we need to really do a good job of making people aware of it. And I did want to tell you about the Autism Walk. It's going to be April the 19th from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. behind the Civic Center. And there's going to be a very special guest there, the Easter Bunny. If somebody wants to come up and take pictures, I don't know who else here.
And our final recognition this evening, Mayor?
This one's fun. Really fun. We're here tonight to recognize a family that has been here as long as I've been in Ozark. And I mean, that goes back to me being a very young man. And they have done so much for the city of Ozark, that family has. And of course, I'm talking about Pete, Sue Ellen, and the daughters. But I can remember Gil and I were talking about earlier tonight in the early 80s, they actually started the Dancing with the Stars at Ozark. I can remember being there as a young kid and two of them dancing around and just stole the show in the country club. But also, I was telling them earlier tonight, this family is one of the reasons I'm probably in Ozark today, going to Margie Benson's play and watching them perform on that stage. And my girls were very, very little and went home one night and said, "We need to come to the Ozark to where my girls can be on that stage and perform like your family did." But of course, came here as Pete was a band director and served for years and years there. Wound up going on to be superintendent here in our school system. And then one of the biggest things I can remember was the work, the effort y'all put in to saving and renovating Flowers Center, not just one time, but multiple times when we almost lost it. They were always front and center in doing that. And Sue Ellen and family, the biggest thing that I'm thankful for is y'all let Pete be the Riverboat Captain for 30 years and get to guide all of us men through from here to Applejack Colin back. And it was always a treat. He loved that trip. He used to tell me that at Christmas time, I started looking forward to the river trip in April. And it was always so much fun. The last year that we went on the river trip, Pete was not going to be able to go because of his health condition. And he had kind of outlived all his partners over the time. So I took one for the team, and I was Pete's assistant captain that night. And we went on that trip. We had the best time on that trip. But the last thing I want to tell you is, right before Pete passed away, Sue Ellen called Sammy Judah and I to the house to help him get into bed. And we got there and we had to work with him to get him into bed. And Pete laid back on the pillow and he raised his head up and he said, "Sue Ellen, you are just beautiful." And I said, "Well, what about me and Sammy?" He said, "Not so much." But anyway, we're going to send a key to the city to you, and it'll let you back into Ozark day or night.
Oh, my goodness.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. I really, really appreciate this. I know that this key will be among my mother's prized possessions. And I love that it'll be in jewelry box. And my girl will fight over it. I have this key, but I want to take it from my heart. Ozark has the heart of my memories and the love I think of you. I'd like to tell you a little bit about the memories I have of Ozark. I came to Ozark as a bride, believe that or not. Sixty years ago, six, five years ago, almost sixty-six. The first thing I remember about Ozark is music, 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 and more music. Because my husband was a band director. And he wrote music with the band shows, with planned band shows, with the band contests, with them trips. Wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. And I was a part of that. I didn't play anything. I had no children, but I could carry the music so well. I was a real band person. I worked in that radio concession stand, sweating, sweating, sweating. But it was wonderful, and I loved every minute of it. He did that for 12 years. He loved it. He ate it. He breathed it. You know, band was a thing. If you didn't band, you weren't anything. My daddy came to the house and he said, "You know what? I don't want to be an old band director." We looked at it kind of askance, like, "What are you talking about?" He said, "I'm going back to school." No. Thirty-seven years old. I was 36. One child was in the second grade, one was in the fifth grade. And we just pulled off our lives completely. Trained schools in the military. When I got to Iowa for two years, I taught at Dean Road Elementary School and loved it. He worked as student financial aid. I was breadwinner. Oh, poor breadwinner. But anyway, I had always been... It was the most rewarding two years of my teaching career because the first time, people didn't think I was crazy. When I was here at Ozark as a teacher, the administrators talked, "She is way out there. She is nuts." And I really wasn't... But I was very much appreciating Auburn, I guess, because they were way out there and they were nuts too. My children, I was so happy that my children fit in. They loved it. I was so pleased that they were not behind academically, that they could keep up with us children in Auburn. And they did. And they made lots of good friends. I did too. We returned back here, and we always hoped that we would. As Patty used to say, "I want to sleep in my own little room." When we turned back, the community welcomed us with open arms. And we appreciated it so very, very much. During this time, Pete was just so busy being superintendent, that I had to find something else to do. My teaching career began this time too. Of course, the first time I ever taught, I taught at Flowers, under standards. Now, if you're familiar with Flowers School, you know what under standards mean. It was hot, no air conditioning in those days, not just at Flowers. No school had air conditioning. They would raise the windows. Every barn in Dale Canyon was right there. So there we were, me and the children and the barns. Across the hall was the boys' bathroom. And that paints a perfect picture of Auburn. Thing I'm leaving out is that my little boys were very adventurous. And they enjoyed having contests. And one day, they stayed so long in the bathroom, I went to see what was the matter. And you know what? They were having a contest. Well, I was so tickled, I couldn't even fuss at them. I just smiled. And I begin to teach. The only thing I can really take credit for is that Landon McCoy and I started a program for gifted children. We served every exceptionality in Ozark, except musicians. We kind of cast them aside because people have always had a love-hate relationship with gifts and gifts. They think they don't need any help. They know it all. They have it all. Well, they think they know all sometimes. And you have to kind of work for that. And we never tried to really teach them A, B, C, D, E, F, G. We tried to make them appreciate the gifts that they had and to use those gifts with the community. We wanted them so much to know that we appreciate them. And no matter what people said about them, we loved them. They knew a lot. Thank goodness, there she is, there she sits down. The one who came after me, who's done such a wonderful job. When I was teaching first grade at Flowers, I would never have made it through that first year had I been to Johnny Hay. She was an institution at Flowers. She taught first grade. A lot of people helped me along the way. When I came back here and I started teaching again, our gifted program was fun. I did it for 20 years. The children seemed to appreciate it and have appreciated me. I'm so sorry, I'm having a problem speaking. I had a stroke several years ago. And the only thing that was really affecting was my speaking ability. And I'm so sorry. I hope you're able to understand. I had a breakdown as a teacher, but I was always involved in all kinds of civic endeavors. I worked at the Triumph Girls Club with Mrs. Clump, the Presbyterian Church. We tried very hard to keep it going. Pete and I did every job at the Presbyterian Church you could do. We taught Sunday School. We did the Presbyterian Youth. He was a part of it for a long while. And believe it or not, we had a very credible quality with the Presbyterian Church. Joanne and Julie helped us with the PYL. But we had a breakdown. We could not... Before Pete died, we began to feel we were not being sustained religiously because frozen people were just too frozen for us. He was born Presbyterian, and I had been one for 60 years. But we decided to join the Methodist Church. Dan and Susan Salwa, good friends, had talked with us so many times about how great First United Methodist Church was. And you know what? They were right. It was great. They took us in and we loved it there. I'm still a member. And Jason Thoreau is a wonderful pastor. We have a group, Bridge Group, that helped me so much to work through Pete's death. In closing, I'd like to tell you how much I love Ozark. I hate sledding. But you know, I'm getting old. I'm 87 years old. And I've been here a long while. I'm staying right now with my daughter Ellen. I'm going to her apartment. She comes back at Oak Grove Inn in Montgomery. I hope to be there about the middle of April. I believe you all know some people there. Barbara Owens is there. And of course, you know, I can't think of her name right now. Jean Beverly is there. And believe, the day I toured, I was surprised to find Bob James was there. Thank you again, Bob. I appreciate and love you. And thank you so much for being here. Oh, well.
Mrs. Ellen, thank you so much for your words. I know that everyone in this room has some sort of connection to you, some sort of story because you are, because your family is such an institution. But just from me, I need to let you know that I teach in the room that now bears your husband's name every single day. And I do not take that legacy for granted. It went from him to one of his students, and I was one of his students. And last week, one of my students that you know came up and said, "By the way, I'm going to school for Music Ed, and I'm coming to take your job later." And this is because it went from Pete Mosley to Dave Bullish to me. And I hope it goes to one of my students because that's what Carroll High deserves. So I want you to know that there are people carrying the torch that your family has left. And just because you guys are in Ozark, everything is still going. Everything that you put in place is still going. And definitely, we will all remember the Mosley name. Thank you. So at this time, we will review the agenda for the 5:30 p.m. meeting. So after a call for order and the prayer and pledge allegiance, we will review the minutes from the regular council meeting that was held on March 5th, 2024. Council members, do you have any questions or comments about those minutes? Item number five is an ordinance permitting and regulating low-speed vehicles on certain public streets. Council members, do you have any questions? I'm actually going to call up Director Ward to speak on that for us. I was asking him if we need to suspend the rules. No, we don't.
I just recommend that y'all get off it.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions or comments for Director Ward? Item number six is a second reading application for retail beer and retail gin wine off premises only for Dalton or... Council members, do you have any comments or questions on the second reading application? Yeah, I'll give y'all a moment. So the rest of this is just going to be going over extra agenda items. So if you're welcome to say if you would like, but also if you would like to take this time to go over here.
Does it get seen? Yes, ma'am. Did you happen to pick up my...
Right here?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay. Item number seven is consideration to approve the execution of a wire ground on C and D grant and the amount of $2,000 for the military mystery preservation project for the painting of the tank and helicopter located on Highway 231. Mayor, would you like to speak on that?
Yes, we applied for the C and D grant to take a helicopter down, paint that tank, and put a helicopter back up. The next item, you see, the price is $19,000. And this will be $10,000 of the $19,000.
Council members, do you have any comments or questions on the consideration to approve that? Item number eight is to approve and award the bid in the amount of $19,000 to paint that tank and the helicopter. Mayor, would you like to speak on one of those two?
Yeah, this was kind of part of our commitment when we accepted the tank from the Adjutant General was that we would restore the tank there. We just got a better price by trying to do it in a helicopter at the same time. I think I provided some paperwork. They'll be paid about $12,000 just to do their helicopter. So we got a little bit better deal to do at the same time.
Council members, do you have any questions on that? Item number nine is a resolution to appoint the city clerk to supervise the municipal elections and to serve as the absentee elections manager. Are you ready?
My absence last week, your last council meeting was due to the election conference that we had. And so this is why we have some agenda items that we need to take care of, resolutions and stuff. So part of that is the mayor is actually the absentee election manager. Or excuse me, he's the municipal election manager until the point where he is rerunning and until the point where he qualifies. Well, qualification doesn't actually take place, but when you reach your $1,000 spent or $1,000 raised, then you become a qualified candidate. The mayor was nice enough to let me know that he has reached that status. And so that's the reason why a replacement needs to be named for the municipal election manager. And then also, as city council, y'all need to name the absentee election manager.
And that's item number 10.
No, it's actually, this is all in one. This is one resolution to declare city clerk to supervise the municipal election as the municipal election manager and to serve as the absentee election manager. It's one resolution. We'll get to the other two.
Council members, do you have any questions for Mr. Peters?
So now the president, Mr. Peter was served in both roles.
Yes, yes. So the resolution would appoint him to both. Do we have any additional questions? I'll just go on to the next one. So the resolution setting the compensation for that.
So as absentee election manager, there is a statute in place that allows for that manager to be paid for that position to serve within that length of time. So that's what the council all need to decide as far as the dollar amount. The minimum dollar amount according to the statute is $50 per day for the absentee election manager. There is also a code that says the county also has an election manager. They get paid $175 per day for the absentee election manager. And it's up to y'all. There's no set amount. That's a free all-to-decide. Minimum is $50.
So council members, have you found the pass?
So back in 2020, it was $50 per day.
So how many days do you want to carry?
It would be between now and election time.
Not now, election time. When the election date, when the absentee election ballots are provided, starting from that point. The start date to the election date is approximately 27 days. And then if there is a runoff, that would be the same. And the runoff election is actually a week shorter this year. They've set it to four weeks.
So 27 times 50 is 13. I just did it and I cleared it. 1350. Yeah, 27 at $50.
You said the county was at 175.
The county absentee election manager gets $175 per day.
How much time do you have to devote to it?
Well, you have to be available for normal business hours from when it's up. You have to be available all the time.
So instead of being up here, you'll be there?
No, no, no. It's here. You have to be available in order to monitor and make sure the absentee is there.
And do your regular job too.
Yeah, yeah.
But then we're not open on Friday, so you have to be there on Fridays?
Not. Normal business hours of operations.
Do we have any kind of suggestions? My initial inkling is, as with what we do with all of our city employees, we do try to use some of the public funds to make them for what they do. So I do feel that the 50 is almost, is not... So I do feel that the 50 is almost, is not, is not enough. I do see you with 175. No, I don't want, I don't usually need to go that high, but...
I would be fine.
Actually, I would. So in the past, we've had two different people at $50 a day, but you're going to be doing the same thing. We've had the supervisor and the absentee manager has always been two different people. It's always been the same person?
The election manager is normally, like I said, the mayor, but if the mayor is a candidate, then he has to turn that over to someone else to be the election manager. Based on my conferences, it's 99.9% of the time it's always the city clerk. So in the last election...
The mayor ran.
The mayor running, and so Denise Strickland was appointed as the election manager, but she was also, as the city clerk, appointed as an absentee election manager. If Mark was not rerunning, then he would serve as the election manager.
No, I understand.
But I'll also say at the conference, they said that even though the mayor might be the election manager, it's always the city clerk who does the all the work. I'm just saying.
I was going to throw that in. I represent several other places. It's always the clerk. Or we need to figure...
Yeah, we need to figure, I mean, once I...
That's $100.
Yeah. I was going to say something, I was thinking... Do you have any?
I'm just throwing that in.
I agree with that. 6500? Split it, split 90, what do we say? I agree with 100.
Whoever makes the recommendation motion will decide.
Yeah, I agree with you. All right. So then whoever makes that needs to make, whoever actually makes that motion needs to include the dollar amount. Okay. Okay. The, all right, so item number 11 is to set a public hearing for April 1st for ordinance establishing the use of electronic voting devices.
Okay. So like I said, to answer your question earlier, when you ask if I'm ready for the election, no, I'm not, so, but we're getting there, and so that's, it's a learning experience. Part of the conference was that we needed to declare that we will be allowed, as the city, to use electronic voting devices. Now, there's two devices, actually three, if you get down to it. They call the DS-200, which is the tabulator machine, and the county has that for us to be able to use. But we also have to be ADA compliant, which is the thing called an express vote, they also have that that they will be able to provide. But in this ordinance, I went ahead and wrote the ordinance up to include a, what they call a polling pad, and so that has been there to be approved. Currently, after having a conversation yesterday with the project judge, that, due to staffing situation, will not be allowed to be used by the municipality. So we'll either have to decide to use the paper to do the elections when it comes time to the, for the municipal election, or I also spoke with the company today, they're trying to work out a way where the city could possibly, or municipalities in general, could actually purchase their own polling pads and have those in order to accommodate the speediness of trying to get people in and out as quickly as possible and the accuracy of it, so. But as of right now, that's kind of where we stand, but this ordinance gives us the ability to be able to possibly use that in the case, and this will have to be voted on and approved and sent to the state of Alabama for their documentation.
Okay. So council members, do you have any questions for Chris or Mike?
You were saying you wrote the ordinance up to use the polling pad?
Yes.
Okay. My only question is, okay, so this is just giving us the ability to use it if we want to.
Right.
It doesn't say that we have to.
Well, no, we have to declare that we are using electronic voting devices, that is required per code. But instead of just doing, you know, one or two, you know, we might as well go ahead and approve it based on all three, so that you ain't got to come back, you know, at any given time, so.
Okay. Okay. Council members, do you have any additional questions on that?
Usually some of the others will receive training from the county.
No, we will actually not receive training from the county. This will come from the company that we decide to use, or possibly another alternative that's going to save us money in order to be able to use, if possible.
So is that the same voting machines that we use and when we've been using?
So the DS-200 is the same voting machine. It's the tabulator is what that is, when you fill out your ballot and you stick it in there, that does the same. So there is a new device called an express vote, which is the ADA compliant. I don't believe the municipality used those the last time. The county used it in the presidential election, when that was available for anybody 70 or older, you can actually skip the line and go straight to that and vote, so just for information purposes. Anybody who needs assistance can actually ask for that, and it will be granted by the poll workers in order to have access, you know, to that immediately.
And they're not connected to the internet or anything like that, a spammer?
That's like I said, the only difference is polling pads. Polling pads or the little iPad voting machines that, you know, when I went to vote, you know, they're used to get in the mail in the county election, presidential election. However, due to, and the Secretary of State will not allow, well, I say cannot allow, due to staffing issues by the company that oversees it, in order to have access to those polling pads, because they are programmed, they are monitored, and they have to be, you know, set up. Well, the counties are the only ones authorized to be able to use those polling pads. So if the county does not grant access to the municipality in order to use those polling pads, then you go back to the paper, you know, in order to do the voting list by paper, or, like I said, they are trying to work on it, if they come up with something between now and the election, you know, to be able to do something, then that might be a possibility, but it looks right, you know, then we're just going to have to step back until they can get it figured out. But the company that does that is called ESNS, they're only able to handle the counties, which is 66 counties. They can't handle the counties and the 539, whatever it is, municipalities throughout the state. So that's the reason that the county is the only one who has access to the, what they call the VR system, that everything has to process through in order to be turned in back to the board registrars to identify who's voted, who hasn't voted, not by name, or not by vote, but just by name. And so that's kind of, that's the holdup as far as one, the county cannot or will not use, allow municipalities to use it. And we're not the only ones, there are a lot of counties that will not allow the municipalities to use those polls.
So how will we check up their Ozark City residents?
So we'll get a list from the board registrars, and it'll be the ultimate...
The ultimate highlight.
...hollow and withdraw. That's why I said the polling pads really are more accurate and quicker, but, you know, until something's figured out.
Can you sweet taco $100 today?
Actually, no, I can't eat it.
All right. Okay. So are there any more questions for Chris on the ordinance? So to add just point of order on that, don't forget that it's, I got to introduce an ordinance establishing the setup of a public hearing. Okay. So with that, I will go out into the audience. Are there any department heads in attendance that have any comments or, what, in attendance that have any comments or questions on any of the agenda items this evening? Is there anyone in attendance that has any comments or questions on any of the agenda items this evening? Are there any comments or questions from anyone in attendance on any subject in particular? Okay, I'll ask you to come up and speak at one of the microphones, please.
Good evening to the council and mayor. Would the members of Dozen Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority please stand, or actually come forward? We are a Dozen Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. We are an international sorority with over 100,000 members nationally and internationally. We represent the counties and the Wiregrass, Houstondale, Coffey, and Geneva Counties. We have several initiatives, one is our Delta Days at the nation's capital and Delta Days at the state capital. We have initiated a new initiative, Delta Days at the city hall. This is our second city, our first city was Enterprise, this is our second city. We are a group of college-educated women focused on scholarship, sisterhood, service, and social action. Our local chapter has over 77 members. We would just like to express our appreciation to the mayor and the city council for your continued work and support of Ozark and your concerns for the city. Thank you again for your dedication in making Ozark a great place, a great place to live. We appreciate you and we honor you at this time. The only thing that we ask of the city is that you would consider continued support for all the organizations in our areas that are working on the homelessness and displaced citizens of our city. Again, thank you for your hard work and your dedication, and we salute you. Thank you. I've been there before. If it's possible, can we do it now?
Yeah.
Mayor, we need you in the center.
Mayor, you can sit down if I like.
Y'all sit this way, I squeeze together. Mayor, can you get the center forward? Mayor.
You need a microphone.
Smartphone detector.
Y'all shift this way.
Y'all shift it this way.
Feel right, feel right.
Go that way for you. What we, I do want to say is that anytime that you need service, we are a service organization, please call on us and we are here. Okay, you guys are good. Okay, everybody ready?
Thank you, ladies. I do applaud the Delta Days at City Hall initiative. Please note that you are welcoming, I'm here, and I do not know all of you, but the ones that I do, you are living the good citizenship, so I have no doubt that all of you really are. Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else in attendance that have any comments or questions? You can come on up and tell Mike.
Good evening, mayor and Ozark City Council. I'm busy buying and buying shopping at Ozark. I'm here in reference to the operation Evergreen that you guys have proposed. Our business is located on that property, we rent that building. We have been in Ozark now for 50 years and that specific location for 10. We generate numerous tax revenue for the city of Ozark. My biggest thing is, is we know what you guys have planned for Operation Evergreen and everything, but our concern is, is the location that we're at, we would like to come to the city and ask if you guys could please take in consideration. My husband's 72, I'm fixing to be 65. We're not going to be in business much longer, but we would like you to take into consideration to let us stay at our location at this time, rent or lease the property from you guys, because we know that the main drive that's going into Operation Evergreen is going to be further down from where our location is. We have talked to numerous people, I find another location here in the city of Ozark in Dale County. We do not want to have to move our business, we love Ozark, we love everybody in the city of Ozark. We're just asking for you guys to please think of us and what we're going to be going through, and we're just asking, you know, to either let us do a long-term lease or, you know, something like that, so we can stay in business. We have a lot of customers in the city of Ozark that don't want to see us leave, but like I said, there's no other location that we can find inside city limits of Ozark to be able, we don't want to have to move our location to Daleville, move out of the city of Ozark and move to Daleville. All we're asking is to take in consideration our point on all this and give us, you know, a little opportunity to be able to stay in business inside the city of Ozark.
President, would you mind if I respond to that?
Sure.
We surveyed that property this morning, so let us get that survey where we can really see exactly where everything falls. This is not going to happen overnight.
We understand that.
Y'all will have lots and lots and lots of time, but let us get the survey and see, even if we're working on the entire development, there may be a way that we can work part of that property on the front side and be able to give y'all extended time, but...
Okay. That's all, that's all we're asking for. You know, we just, we just don't want to have to pack up everything and move out of the city of Ozark. Like I said, we've been here 50 years, and that's kind of hard at the age that we're at, to have to give, you know, have to relocate everything. Like I said, I'm fixing to be 65, we're almost at retirement age, and we're just asking for you guys to take in consideration to, you know, let us at least stay where we can as long as we can before we have to make that decision.
And let me say this, I've made numerous calls on y'all's behalf.
I understand you have, yes, sir, and we appreciate it, we really do, and, you know, there's other people out there that's helping us also. The mayor of Daleville is all, you know, we've already talked to him, he says he could probably get us a place over there in Daleville, but we're looking at rent being $4,500 to $7,000 a month. We're a small business, we're not, you know, a big business, and there's just no way for us to be able to pay that kind of, you know, we know the building needs upgrades, we'll put up a privacy fence, we'll do whatever we got to do, we'll paint, we'll do whatever we got to do to be able to stay in our location as long as we can.
We don't want you moving outside of the city limits.
Well, we understand that, we don't want to move outside the city limits, we love Ozark, you know, I'm, my dad was military, I've been here since 1907. You know, I went to all the schools here, I went to East State, you know, all our kids have went to the schools here. We don't want to have to pack up and move out of the city of Ozark, so we'd appreciate any consideration that you guys could help us with.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone, thank you, thank you. Is there anyone else in attendance that has any comments or questions on any subject in particular this evening? So with that, I will, yes, sir?
My name is Brian, I just writing down on Andrews Avenue across Dr. Tammy's IHK place, I'm going to go see that leak and start to happen under the road.
Yes, yes, we did, we did.
Bring it up.
I was like, here, there's water coming out of the...
Yes, to make sure.
Yes, well, thank you for bringing it up, I appreciate it. All right, so with that, I will go to final comments. Mayor?
All right. We have lots of work going on at the Holman House, we're, they were up there this afternoon, tried to justify the maintenance on the doors, hopefully they'll have the doors installed in a week. The tent is up on the pad, the stage is up there, we're putting additional lights up, trying to get ready for the event Thursday night, but all that seems to be coming together pretty good. Y'all remember back months and months ago, we talked about a development across the aviation college, where Mr. John Harper owns property there, they've come back to us, we actually have some drawings, they're talking like they're going to move equipment in. They're talking like they're gonna move equipment in there in the next three or four weeks and hopefully see some work going on there. The, we signed the bail agreement after last meeting when y'all authorized me to sign it. And then the RMCI sales contract, RMCI has that. And talking to the owner of RMCI looks like they're probably four or five weeks away from that contract being executed. The tennis courts, we've had a little bit of a stall there. There were some questions raised with, through the DECA crowd. We had to provide them some additional information and we'll wait for them to respond back before we tell the contractor to go in. The property on the rear flower center, they started working on the foundation on that today. They're also at the batting cages. They started pulling all the posts and fencing down today. So they'll start studying that up tomorrow. So that ought to go pretty quick once they, once they get to that point. I mentioned the survey on the property out on the highway. And our military flag program, I put together forty more of those flags last week. And I think we got about thirty more ordered right now. It's just, they just keep pouring in, so it's really amazing. The ECor property that we were trying to work with them on the old part of the Van Huser property. He was supposed to get through, finish with that survey on two thirty-one today and jump out there and survey that lot out. So hopefully we'll get that and get to bring that to y'all at the next meeting. The check center roof, that roof replacement that y'all approved several weeks back is in process. So hopefully that'll be fixed for long. The, I think it's, I had the water leak on there to mention to them because I've had calls about it all day. So we do have some board appointments coming up. Most of these people are wanting to be reappointed. And I see no reason for us not to reappoint them, some of them have only been on there one time. But there is a school board appointment that's coming up. Leslie Reader has said that she does not want to be reappointed due to some conflicting issues with her job. So we, I had a couple of names who expressed interest. We sent word to them to send resumes. So if y'all know of anybody, school board member wise, that you would like to report and get those together, we'll put them all together, send them out to y'all, so you can. And Reader, I think that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Enfinger?
I just wanna thank everybody for coming tonight. It's amazing to see it through, we just appreciate everybody coming and stating their opinion. That's what we're here for, to listen to you. And we thank y'all, thank y'all all, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Jackson?
Mayor, I saw that there's never gonna be a looking to resign.
Five one, I believe. She goes through five, may first.
The only thing I have is, again, I had mentioned previously, the AUSA Third Region Meeting, three through six April. And they would like for all elected officials to try to attend the opening reception, which would be on the third through the third.
Councilman Pearl?
Just Carolina baseball last night. Got a big win over New Brockton, fourteen to four in five innings. Great play for the, for the guys. Important game coming up Wednesday night, they're taking on Uofa as a region game. And that'll be important, try to get a win in there to get, get towards the playoffs. So, but they're a young team, doing, doing good, had a great night last night.
Thank you. Councilwoman Harlow?
Again, I would like to thank you all for coming here. I think your Delta Days are, is that what you called it? Yeah, Delta Days at City Hall are awesome initiative. And I wish more sororities and fraternities would get involved and show their support in the communities that they live in. Definitely gonna reach out to you for the upcoming projects that I have in mind. So thank you for coming here.
To echo everyone else, it was wonderful to see everyone here today. My only other thing is, we put it out on everything Ozark, the applications are open for Ozark 101. Our spring sessions, there are only twenty spots available. But if you are someone who is interested in knowing how the city works, you end up, it's eight weeks, right? Eight weeks. I'm looking back at it and it's like, it is, it is eight weeks. You are obligating yourself to, it's three hours every day, or every, Wednesdays for eight weeks. But absolutely invaluable. I would not be here on this bench had I not gone through Ozark 101. Six years, no, no, oh my goodness, is it like ten years ago now? Is it like ten years ago now? Yeah, we would have, in the very first Ozark 101 class. So I will, I will absolutely be a cheerleader for that forever. Because lots of people think they know how the city functions. But the people who go through that become some of the largest municipal cheerleaders. They realize exactly how the city functions. And then when someone complains about it, they go, you know, here, do this. And then everything just functions so much smoother that way, and I love it. So I am a huge advocate for that. So with that, I will call this meeting to a close and we'll begin the next meeting in three minutes. I call this meeting of the City Council of Ozark to order. We will begin this evening with a prayer led by Councilman Jackson and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Blanket.
Father, we come this evening in love as men, we know how. Thank you for your goodness and your loving kindness. Heavenly Father, we ask that you bless each one of us that we might be a blessing to someone else as we travel life, shall we? And Heavenly Father, we ask you to bless this city, bless our state and federal officials wherever they may be. In Jesus' name we pray.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. At this time, we will review the minutes from the regular council meeting that was held on March fifth, twenty twenty-four. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move that we approve the minutes from the regular council meeting held on March the fifth, two thousand and twenty-four as presented.
Thank you, I do have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on approving these minutes as presented? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. At this time, we'll set the agenda for this evening. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move that we set the agenda as presented.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on setting the agenda as presented? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number five is an ordinance permitting and regulating low-speed vehicles on certain public streets. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, yeah, Madam President, I can motion that the ordinance permitting and regulating low-speed vehicles to off-parks on certain public streets and movements adoption.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on this ordinance? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number six is a second reading application zero five zero for retail beer and retail table wine off premises only. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move that we approve a second reading application oh five zero retail beer off premise only and zero seven zero retail table wine off premises only.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on accepting this second reading application? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number seven is consideration to approve the execution of Wiregrass RCND grant. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move that we consideration approval of execution of Wiregrass RCND grant amount of ten thousand dollars for the Military History Certification Project for painting the tank and the helicopter located on two thirty-one and would it be approved?
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on approving this grant, the execution of this grant? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number eight is consideration and approval to award the bid to John Wayne Riles in the amount of nineteen thousand to paint the tank onto the helicopter on two thirty-one. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move that we approve the, award the bid to John Wayne Riles in the amount of nineteen thousand dollars to paint the tank and helicopter located on Highway two thirty-one.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on this approval and bid award? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number nine is a resolution appointing the city clerk to supervise the municipal elections and to serve as the absentee elections manager. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I introduce a resolution appointing the city clerk to supervise the municipal election and to serve as absentee election manager.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on this appointment? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number ten is a resolution setting the compensation for the absentee election manager. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I introduce a resolution setting compensation for one hundred dollars for absentee election manager movements approved.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
For day. For day. Yeah. It doesn't say.
For day.
For day. Thank you, I have a motion on the floor.
Say that down.
I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on, on this resolution?
That should be bound to days only.
All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number eleven is to set a public hearing, oh, sorry, is an ordinance establishing the use of electronic voting accounting devices and setting a public hearing. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move that we set a public hearing for April the first, twenty twenty-five for an ordinance establishing the use of electronic voting accounting devices.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have any further discussion on this ordinance for setting this public hearing? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. If there are any further business, I will call on final comments. Mayor? Councilman Enfinger? Councilman Jackson? Councilwoman Pearl?
One thing, we're at Kalanis Mo, we're having a raffle for our Yeti Pooler. It's gonna be, a lot of booty set up for, for the crawfish day that day. So if you've got tickets, you get one ticket for five or five tickets for twenty. And you get a filled, a Yeti Pooler filled with yiddies. They buy one, like a.
Still a yiddie.
Still a yiddie.
I was about to say, we forgot to actually announce crawdada. We have one more meeting before that, so crawdada on April fifth. All right. Harlow, okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I do need all the council members to stay. Y'all have to sign the ordinance.